And they are all here, but if you try to go into details, it can get very confusing. But that's the simplest, easiest way. It has gone through our attorney. It has gone through everybody. Everybody says this is too good to be true. Let's do it, kind of thing.
So just as a reminder for my committee members, they just testified before the Budget Committee. The Budget Committee sent it up to the full council without a recommendation. At the end of our discussion, I would encourage this committee to do the same thing, to send this up to the full council without a recommendation, unless you feel strongly about it. But we can certainly, just to move it up, so both of them are at the full council level for our next meeting. Counselors, I'll open it up. Does anybody have any? I mean, there's a lot of stuff here. And I'm not going to pretend like I understand everything behind this situation. We're talking about, I'll start. Talking about solar panels and we're talking about, right? We're talking, this is about, this is not about solar panels.
This is a financial deal.
Fine, okay.
Associated with solar panels, they install somewhere outside our city boundaries. It's in Western Mass.
So solar panels outside of city boundaries, we're getting a deal that we're going to be able to accrue the benefits equal whatever the cost or whatever the production of the electricity is and whatever the rate is, and we're going to get part of that money? It's almost like we're contracting out to a third party to conduct?
It's not part of the third-party supplier program, nothing. We actually get cash for, towards our bills.
Okay.
It's really, it's yet another twist on the whole solar.
Fascinating.
Yeah.
So we can go out. Any municipality, any municipality can go out and it go, and I'm sorry.
Eighty percent of the cities in Massachusetts already have these contracts in place because they are very beneficial to.
Sure.
They were designed by the Public Utility Commission specifically for.
For benefit. And that goes into our coffers, into the city coffers. Okay. It's not going to taxpayers directly. It's going to the municipal coffers. And give us, just, I think this is going to be helpful for all of us, including me, which is this. Give us a like, a similar city to Lawrence that has engaged, has adopted this, and what, how are they benefiting? Do you have like a comp with Lowell, I don't know, Haverhill, Everett, Chelsea, Brockton, Springfield?
I know for a fact, and I know what we have, I have, I was responsible for, I know that much I know. I know Lowell has also signed such contracts, all other things. I'm not really.
I just want an example. Just give me one so we can visualize it.
I don't have another community, but I just want to point what our example is. Here in Lawrence, it's about $140,000 a year is what we'll save off our electric bills by getting into this agreement. That's a substantial amount of money over 20 years. It's several million dollars. But many communities have these same deals because the Department of Public Utilities is promoting this, trying to get solar statewide. So many communities are taking advantage of this. And they're, I don't think they get the 12 and 1/2% discount. We're getting 12 and 1/2. Many, as Anil mentioned, are only getting a 10% discount. We're getting a little bit more, which is great. And again, it's just coming off our electric bills.
That's all. We're not getting cash. We're just getting a reduction on our electric bills, which is as good as cash. Right. I got you. Okay. I'm good now. I'm going to open up to my colleagues unless somebody says something wrong. No? Counselors? Any comments? Okay. Looking for, did you really want to add something, Anil? Okay. We're about to vote. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to send to the full council our recommendation.
Without a recommendation. Motion been made and properly seconded. Any further discussion? Senior, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you.
We will have question on the next meeting.
Yeah, so be ready for that. As is our custom, we do have a counselor here, Counselor Levy. Is there, you have one item on here? Is that what you said? All right. What is it? Which item is that, counselor?
Good evening, counselor. 444-23.
423?
Yes.
Say it again.
444-23. It's on the table business, new business, November 21st, 2023.
Got it.
You got it?
I got it. It's on page three. Page three, halfway down, November 21st.
Yes.
Go ahead, counselor.
Good evening, counselor.
Is there an objection to take this off the table? Any objection? No objections. Good, counselor.
Thank you, Councilor President. As you remember, I just submitted a request for voting ID last year. So this item was sent to the full council for discussion. So we discussed it at the beginning of this year, and we were waiting for the city attorney to review the proposal. Practically, the proposal is the same proposal that was submitted a couple of years ago, that was approved by the full city council, that was brought by the Mayor Sullivan to the estate, and nothing happened. So I just wrote practically the same proposal, nothing having changed. And I'm asking you to today, to vote in favor and to send it to the full council, and to give it the correct action that we are supposed to give it, the request for voting ID from now.
Counselor, help us remember, did this ever get up to the full council or has it always been here?
No. That was, well, that was here at the beginning when I just submitted for first time. Then that was sent to the committee or the hall, but because the committee or the hall was not meeting, we take it, we take it at the full, at the labor or the full council. I can remember when it was, I know that was practically, I think that was maybe February of this year that we take it. And then it was decided to send it over here while the city attorney do the review and see if there is any change.
And.
I spoke with the city attorney. I spoke with the city clerk. Everything is fine. You have it in your package, all the information. That is what the city clerk told me, that it was there. But from the time that I submitted for all of the review that we haven't done, nothing has been changed because there is nothing to change. The law haven't changed at all. So everything was okay. That's what I'm asking now to be sent to the full council.
Did the city attorney send us anything written?
I still saw that he sent it back to the city clerk without no change or without doing any different. That is what he told me. The city clerk had everything from him.
Yeah. All right, counselors, I think we have, so we have a new member here. And this is to deal with the votes and requiring a voter ID. It's a home rule petition.
This is a home rule petition. She was here when we did it.
Oh, you were here for this?
Yeah, so she was. She was here when we sent it to the full council, when we discussed it at the full council. Then when was sent over here, because you didn't have any information from the city attorney, you say, okay, just come back. I was not able to come back. But I spoke with him, you know, maybe a week or two weeks ago. I spoke with the city clerk this week. He said that everything is okay, that he sent them out. So I asked to please to send it to the full council to be discussing, taking the action that this request is needed. So maybe we can send it just only as a recommendation of the.
Okay. So there you go. So counselors, Counselor Levy is asking us to send this up to the full council for a vote. It's a home rule petition. The language has been crafted. We don't see it here, but I do recall seeing the language. I'm not sure why it's not in our packet. We can, if there is a motion, if there is a motion to send it up, we would all, obviously, we're going to want to make sure that that language is included at the full council level. But I think, I think there has been language. So I'm looking for a motion from anyone on this matter.
Motion to send a full council report.
Motion to send us up to the full councils and then a committee report, and also requesting that the full documentation with the draft language be included. It's been made, is that right? Made and seconded by the vice chair. Discussion. Senior, discussion. I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. There you go, counselor.
Thank you, counselor. Have a good night.
You're welcome. Have a good night. Counselor, I, just because I don't think this is very controversial, and we can do this rather quickly. I like to, there's no objections to document 32124, Feast of the Three Saints. Gentlemen, will you please come forward?
Good evening, counselors. Wayne Peters, Mike Lawley, 20 Common Street, Lawrence, Massachusetts. We're here for the Feast of the Three Saints. Our annual feast is coming up this year, number 101 years. We just finished our 100th year last year, and we, first of all, want to thank the city council and the mayor of Lawrence for all the help that we received last year to make it a very successful time. We really had a good time, and we hope everybody felt the same way. This year, we're here again for our 101st, coming up on Labor Day weekend this year. And we're just asking here, Mike and I have been here probably for about 15th time, coming, asking for permission to close the streets and to have our annual event this year.
So counselors, traditionally, we don't get involved in the closing of the streets. That's a function of the police department. And fortunately for the organizers, they haven't had a need to come before the council because the streets are not under our purview. However, when they have carnival rides, they have had come before us. And so I think what you're asking, what's different this year is that you're looking for a carnival ride on a city-owned lot, not a big carnival. Well, you describe it. I don't want to put words in your mouth. What are you looking to do and where's the lot?
The city parking lot down here on Common Street. We want to put some carnival rides in the lot. We've done it in the past. We haven't done it over many years, but we have done it in the past. So we're coming to look for permission to do that.
And that's essentially all they're here before us because other stuff, it doesn't really come before us. But that is ultimately what we're voting on tonight, to give them permission to use that lot for carnival rides. That's what they're here for. That's it. So I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to send it to the full council.
Motion made by the vice chair, seconded by Counselor Santiago. Discussion. Senior, discussion. I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The next meeting is Tuesday, the 16th, I think, right?
Yes.
16th. So please come.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yep. I do think there's one more, I don't think, very controversial one. The Datterday one, which is 280, 424, and then we'll deal with you. You're coming up next. I haven't forgotten about you. Well, I know this is going to be, I don't want this to be that long. So that one could be longer. All right. Your name, sir?
Yes, my name is Sean Burke, and I represent Datterday Legacy, which is a corporation, nonprofit corporation. And I would first like to thank everyone, the mayor, to everyone on this board for your generosity, but more importantly, for your time. Many of you have come to some of these events that Datterday has had, and it's really for fathers to spend time with their kids to, it's an investment within the community.
Next page.
And I have to say, it's been quite touching on our side, on the investment of the city and the importance of families. And Datterday Legacy is just really, in essence, trying to make sure that people have an opportunity that have less resources. So on August 24th, we want to be able to, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, Champion Park.
Campeone Common.
Campeone Common. Thank you. We'd like to have a Datterday event from 1 to 5. We did fill out the permit paperwork, and we're, we would like to be able to have fathers come with their kids. Last year, we did the same event. We actually ended up having lots of mothers who came with their kids as well. And we keep that open because the importance of families, the importance of people seeing the positives in families is so important to the base of what we're trying to accomplish, which is just to provide people opportunities. And many times, fathers describe the fact that they, they see children and money sometimes as barriers to spending time. So we've tried to eliminate that. We're, I think we've done a pretty good job. We've done smooth sailing, or we did something at the boating club. We did building rockets and airplanes over at the airport. The Datterday event is a little different from those events because it's kind of in an open park, and sometimes, you know, people may come that wouldn't normally have been marketing to. And we're open to all of that because it's so important that people learn that there's opportunity, that the city has invested in, and that there's a venue for us. And I'm going to give an example of why all these things are so important. Over the past year, one of the things that we've realized with the courts is that, that there's a need for a visitation center, for people to be able to see their kids who may not have the financial means to do so. A probate court may order them to do it. These Datterday events, including the one that we're here for, all channel around the same concept, that we want to give that opportunity and not have people have the burden of, the financial burden that's associated with it. So there's been a huge commitment, volunteerism. The city has been, many of you have been to some of these events. They're super important, I think, to where we're going to go as a community, right, which goes way beyond Lawrence. But that is, many people, many residents in Lawrence have benefited from these events. And the permit is really what we need, right, to be able to do it right, and we're learning how to do that. So we need your help to get that approval for this permit. And what we're going to, the plan is, we're going to have games, like cornhole, for example, footballs and frisbees. We want people to interact with their kids, right? So that doesn't cost a lot of money, but we just need to get them there. And then at the end, we have an affiliation with, with the fatherhood program, which is also affiliated with probation over at the court. And when you do the 12-week program, we're actually going to celebrate that at the end of the Datterday event. So that's the reason why we had asked for that, the staging area, because we'd like to call the people up for them when they complete a 12-week program on fatherhood, which is mostly like in more of a conference room style, where people get to talk about being a dad. And then Datterday is the execution of that, right? Hey, you go out and you actually do something with your kid. That is, so we want to be able to celebrate the fact that these people have invested in themselves and have invested in their kids. So at the end, we're going to give certificates out. That's the plan. If there's any questions, maybe I could answer.
Basically, you answered my question because the first question that I have is why you put it daddy, all day, for the organization daddy all day. You say for.
I don't see the, I don't see the.
For the, for the, for the people you try to involve to the community back again?
Yes.
And another question is, can you tell me why that is not mom? How many activity daddy can do it, daddies can do it, and mom doesn't?
So I love that question, actually, because we isolate no one. I'll say that upfront. But so right now, we have, we have a partnership with Merrimack Valley Family Services because we've invested in, and I think other agencies are seeing that what we're doing is working. So yes, there is a piece that it appears it's more father-oriented, and in some respects, it is more father-oriented, because there's a need where fathers need help. And mothers, when a father is helped, a mother is also helped, right? Because it's not about the parents primarily. It's primarily about the kids. And that's what we push. We try to show parents, and that's why we're doing the visitation center, which we're going to have six hours, which primarily is an opportunity for mothers to be able to come and get services through Merrimack Family Services. We're going to give them a packet. And then fathers will come in, they'll get to spend some time with their, with their child, because more children live with the mom, okay, than live with the dad.
Thank you.
So that's, but we're open to mothers that need help. There's no question. But the fatherhood program, the one that's through probation and Leahy, and now I think is actually going to go back to probation, that is, that is father-driven. And we're, we're the execution of that. We're, hey, out in the field. We really believe that people have that opportunity. They have a little bit of time. It's just a kickstart. The person has to make that decision themselves. But we're just giving them that opportunity. And this permit is one of the ways to give the community a chance, you know, the people that are in it. And those kids, when they have that opportunity, you know, it's so interesting because last year at Datterday, when you saw the smile on the kids' faces, it was unbelievable. Like, you know, that's, you can't buy it. You know, it's amazing. It's such a great feeling. I still feel it today. That investment for those kids, they deserve it. But the parents sometimes, right, as adults, sometimes we forget what was so important when we were a kid. And it was that structure, that ability to spend some time with your parent. And this, these things that you're investing in, even by just approving this permit, is telling the community how important families are. And this is just a great opportunity for the city, for families in the city. And they don't have to pay. They can just come. And I think that that's super important. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Do you want to speak?
Counselor Del Rosario.
Thank you to you. What I encourage my colleagues is to go. You got to go to, allow them to bring you in to when they meet, and you will understand completely how the program work. I got myself involved with them, thinking there was something else. And when I got there, I was totally surprised. And what they do is amazing. I went through things that they, that they worked with these guys back 20 years ago. And if this program would assist back in those days, it would have helped me a lot with my first kids that I had, my two daughters. But when I sit down with them and listen to the stories, because there's tons of guys sitting there telling you the stories, and what they doing to get back into kids' life, and what they doing to help those guys, is amazing. And these people have changed their whole life just to be back into the kids' life. And that's what they providing. So I encourage you guys to get in touch with them and go to one of the meetings. I mean, they, you just sit down and listen to the stories, and it's amazing. Where they are now, and then if you go a couple of days later, where they are after that, or what they preparing. They preparing to go to court. They want to get back to the family or back to the kids. And they even have something that is amazing. They have, they prepare a court, in a real court, which is amazing to me. And it's a case, a real case with a real judge, right? But it's, it doesn't mean anything. And they show them how to behave in court, to get allowed, to be allowed to see the kids, how to, most of the time, you go to court and you already agitated, and anything that comes out of the judge or the mother's of your kid's mouth, it tricks you. And then you lose everything at that moment, even your kids. And they do amazing work. So you guys, I encourage you guys to go by. I've been involved with them. I was a guest speaker once, but I first listened to what this guy had been through and where they are now. Guys allowed the kids years ago. Now they have the kids. So it's amazing. And that a day, it's that day where, some of them don't have the kids, but they get the kids that day. So it's an amazing program. That's all.
Could I add one thing to that?
Sure.
So one of the things about the mock trial is first, we did it, you know, we had to get somebody to wear the robe. But now we get real judges. That's right. And the thing is, is what I've found out, I have a social work program in the courts, is that people just don't know how to do it. So when you give them that opportunity and then you visually show them, you know, hey, don't, never say anything negative about the mother of the child. It's a, it's a policy that we have. It's not smart. Having a photograph, for example, was one of the things that you learned in the mock trial. Have a photograph of you and your child. We try to use these Datterday events for that. We take photos and we give them to them. And then they can show that to the judge, and it humanizes them. And this is so important because it's making them have more confidence in themselves and their investment in being a parent, which is super important, because the more family-oriented, the more that they want to be that good role model. Some of them just have struggled and haven't had that chance for that kickstart. And I think your investment, our investment, has been a great partnership in making these opportunities a reality. And, you know, hopefully you'll see that with regards to this August 24th event. And we would invite everyone, obviously, to come with their families.
That's in bold, so just about the permit itself. Would you happen to have a copy of the, of the application with you tonight?
I do not. Frank Audi, who's working with me with Datterday, had filled it out. I did go over to, they filled it out on the computer at the, in the office. So I didn't get a copy of it, and I apologize.
No worries. So, so counselors, I do believe that there was a copy. I do think it was with us. I didn't pursue it. The biggest question I have, and I don't have the application here, and you're, and we'll probably end up sending it up, but do you recall, the most important thing is that there's no conflict on the, you want to have at the common, right, the Campeone Common? Yes, you do. So, so there's no, last year, when I was, I think it was last year, there was another, there was that going on, and then you had another event going on, and it was, it made it a little challenging, right?
Yes.
Is that for today?
No, that's not for today.
Yeah.
That was on the utility, that's what the, it means there's no.
Oh, that's right. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Yep, yep, yep. All right. So we just, thanks to Counselor Del Rosario. He, Johnny on the spot, he's got some notes here about, that there's no conflict on that day. And so I just hope that, that the event works out well. There was that little, I don't want to, I don't want to make a big, too big a deal out of it. You managed, but I just hope that you don't have to deal with that issue this year, that you got the space to yourself, and you don't have to compete with another event at the same time.
Thank you.
And that's my question. I don't have the application, but I'm presuming and hoping that that's not going to take place this year. So what I would do is this. I would look for a motion and send this up to the full council with a favorable recommendation. I will ask, please put this in the notes. We need to make sure that the actual application is in the full packet for the city council. So if they were looking for it, they would have it. So please make, we got to have Eileen or Teresa or somebody make sure that, that the application is in next Tuesday's packet. So that's, that's not on, that's not on you, that's on us. So we got to make sure that happens. All right. Looking for a motion.
Motion to send to the full council with favorable recommendation.
Motion made by Counselor Del Rosario, seconded by the vice chair Reyes. Discussion. Senior, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next Tuesday.
Yes.
Got it. You got it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Director.
Who?
You know, I, so I, I'm looking through my notes. So the clerk sent me like three things, right?
Yes.
Number one, this is, this is, this is the first item. This is proposed, this is 317, proposed new ordinance licensing board administrator. This is what I was sent, and I should have seen this and read it and then digested it and then told you. This title on these items should be tabled. The city is still determining if this will be a union or a non-union position. Until that is clarified, the attorney cannot draft the final ordinance language. You would probably want to refer this to the attorney for his draft language. So anyway, I don't think we're going to get very far on this. I don't want to, I don't want to have you waste your time. Is it, I'm going to recommend to our committee members that we send this document to the full council, no, to the city attorney for their review and hopefully figure out if it's union or non-union, figure all that stuff out.
No problem.
You're here right now. I don't want to, you're here. Is there anything you want to speak about on this issue? Or you're going to come back and speak later, but?
No, I'd rather just speak later.
Okay. You got it.
Save everybody time.
Okay. You got, I'm so sorry. Should have clicked earlier, didn't.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
All right. Good night.
Good night. So I'm looking for a motion to send this up to the city attorney to draft the ordinance language.
So much.
Motion made by the Counselor Santiago, seconded by the vice chair Reyes. Discussion. Senior, discussion. I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. City attorney for review. City attorney for review. The number's 317-24.
317-24.
That is correct. All right, let's see here, let's just, so, 320-24, there's nobody here. The good news is that they've got one more bite of the apple, because it's on the 11th, and we have a meeting in August the 4th or 5th or something like that, right?
So, motion to table 320-24?
Motion made to table by Council Del Rosario, seconded by the Vice Chair. All, discuss, no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. On document 322-22, Nilsa has asked if we could table this.
Send the notification to table it.
You got it? Oh, good, so let's make, let's make that motion, 322. So, motion to table by Council Santiago, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Del Rosario, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. I have one from, I've got one from Officer Cano. We'll go to that last. Document 325-24, 15-minute parking at 294 Prospect Street. We typically send this to the police department, looking for a motion?
Motion to send to the full council meeting.
No, no, police department.
Motion to send to the police department and...
For their review.
For the review or for their...
For their review, motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Del Rosario, to the police department, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. And again, all these matters that go to the police department remain tabled here. Okay. Document 326-24, that's you.
To the department.
Mm-hmm. For their review.
For review.
Okay, motion been made for 326, police. Motion made and seconded by the Vice Chair, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. 327-24, one-way in Hillside Street, starting at Havel Street to the Hill?
To the Hill.
I'll double check this out.
Okay, hold on, hold on, we're double checking. Go ahead, what are you seeing?
Chair, this is a duplicate. The one-way request for Hillside was previously requested, and if I'm not mistaken, it's item 101-23, which is in, which is in page four.
How'd you remember this? Oh, this is your district?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's why you remember it, okay. Page, page four?
Yes.
Yes, right at the bottom, 101-23.
101, got it, yeah.
It's the same item. I don't know if we can withdraw this one, and maybe on table 101-23 and continue that one.
Yeah, I think, so, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I know, even Anna Levy, Council Levy is also sponsoring 101-23, but I'm assuming she forgot about it, but...
And that happens, right?
Yeah.
So, it is your district? I don't think this is anything hostile, I think she's trying to work, and you're trying to do the same thing, so everybody's working toward the same idea. So, what would you like to do, counselor?
I mean, I don't know how far we are on 101-23, I'm assuming it's already in the engineering, and maybe the police already have worked on it. Continue on table 101-23, maybe if it's possible, and withdraw.
So, I'm looking for a motion, start one at a time. I'm looking for a motion to withdraw number, document number 327-24.
So move.
Motion made by Council Del Rosario, seconded by Council, the Council Vice Chair. Any discussion? And I just wanna make sure we're clear on this, so we're clear, is that we believe this is a duplicate. Councilor Levy and Council Del Rosario have both already on the agenda, have an item to do the same exact thing, so this is a duplicate. So, this is the only reason why we're, this is the only reason why we are withdrawing this. Pat, if you would do me a huge favor, somewhere around your notes, say it's a duplicate, because I'm gonna look at that next Tuesday, and say document number 101-23 is the same matter, is the same item. So, withdrawing 327-24, and in the notes, say that document number 101-23 is the same thing, and that's it before the ordinance committee.
And I'm looking for a motion to on table 101-23.
Let's get that passed first. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Go ahead.
And I'm looking for a motion to on table 101-23.
Is there any objection? Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Go ahead, counselor.
And now I'm looking for a motion to resend this to the police department and also the city engineer for review.
Second.
101-23.
101-23 go to...
Correct, and also the city engineer.
And we're looking for an update, I think that's how you wanna look at it, it's probably already been sent. So, we're looking for an update on 101-23 to the city engineer and the city's police department, and they already have it, we're looking for an update. Motion's been properly made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Santiago, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it.
Now, motion to table 101-23.
Second.
Okay, automatically did it, but you wanna do any, anything that we send to police goes right back, okay? Document 328-24 is handicap parking at 1416 Custer Street. Looking to send that to the police department, looking for...
Motion to send to the police department and...
For review.
Yeah, for review.
For review. Motion made by Council Santiago, seconded by Council Vice Chair, discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. One of these is Cano's, hold on, gotta find, is that one? Heritage Parking Company, nope. 329-24, one-way, is that on our, let me see if we have something here?
Yeah, I definitely just asked you...
Okay. This is a really weird one, councilors, so, I just, I just, I think all we're looking for is some sort of formal. He usually writes something out, like this is a formal, I've done a meet's measures, I've looked at it, I've talked to somebody, and I approve it. Whose district is that, by the way? Is that yours, Council Santiago? That's your?
B.
That's Council Luzon's?
Yeah, it is in the border, but that's B. One size A, one size B, but that's number is B.
B.
Yeah.
What I would do is this, councilors, as a courtesy to our colleague, Council Luzon, I would send this to Council Luzon and let her know that we're looking to do this, and then we would also, so two things, I would, I would just make her aware, send her correspondence, make Council Luzon aware that this is an item in her district, because I know that there was...
I didn't think she was aware, we called...
She was? Are you sure?
Yeah, they collected the sign, we need to get it in the package for the last...
Okay, so you think she's good with that? Okay. So, we just need the language, right? The officer's actual...
Yeah.
Because doesn't he usually give us like a one-pager on something? Looking for a motion to table, make it super simple, and invite Officer Cano to the next meeting.
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion to table 329-24, and invite Officer Cano to our next meeting for this purpose.
Yes.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. 330, 24, 15-minute parking, it's in my district, 241 South Union Street. Oh, God bless us, that's, meters are there. Do they say when, what time? Yes, they do. They don't have a time. So, council, so I will, here's the challenge that I'm facing, and I don't think I'm alone. So, on a street like South Union Street where we have meters, and you could look at Broadway, you can look at other places, the challenge is that we have meters, and...
But I think she is looking to have a 15-minute, I think, because sometimes you don't have the space that people can drop up. I think they want a 15-minute because it's not really for the meeting, because some people go to the, any place, it just not for the supermarket, and stay for a long hour, and then the supermarket need the space as soon as possible.
So, and that makes sense to me. The challenge that I'm facing as a district counselor in this particular street is this, is that it makes it very difficult for the police officers, you have 15 minutes here, 30 minutes here, 25 minutes here, if you go down the street, it leapfrogs all over the place. The DPW in the perfect world would love to see it uniformed, either have it for an hour, or two hours, or have it not just all over the place. Because sometimes what I'm facing, councilors, is I'll have a place where there's a supermarket, and they may just need 15 minutes, but it'd be right next to a restaurant, where someone's gonna be wanting to sit there for an hour. And if I put 15 minutes there, the restaurant person's gonna say, what are you doing? My people can't stay here and eat for 15 minutes. And, and the supermarket person is saying, don't put an hour there, I need people to be able to come in and go. So, there's a real challenge on, on streets like this, where there's a hole, there's nails, there's check things, there's all kinds, beauty salons, there's a whole bunch of different things, and each one of them's got a different need. And sometimes we're right next to competing needs, and it's so hard, and I don't, I don't have an answer. The only thing DPW says is try to make it consistent, make it like an hour. So, it's not perfect, but it has something, I mean, traditionally, we would send this to the police department, right?
We can send with Officer Cano, and he can have...
Okay. Okay, I'm looking for that motion. Is there a motion to send to Officer, for Police Department for their review?
Yes.
Council Vice Chair, is there a second? Seconded by Council Santiago, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Am I the only one that's got this problem? Is there a problem like this throughout the city?
It's probably throughout the city, and I heard DPW saying that they want a uniform, and I think they already have the language when it's a meter in place, and it's streets like that, like it was in South Union, Broadway, so they do have some type of a language of how that...
I think...
Yeah, sometime, yeah, it's all uniform already, how they approve it.
Yeah, and this, okay, and that's gonna not make it uniform, we go 15 minutes. All right, it's, it's no easy answers.
Yeah, so, I mean, if Cano, if the officer of the Police Department gets it, they probably will come back with the actually language that we've been using for those type of...
I'd hope so.
Things, yeah, it's all uniform.
That gets us out of there. Okay. 331-24, handicap parking, 44 Perry Ave, looking for the Police Department review.
Send them for the Police Department for review.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Del Rosario, seconded by the Vice Chair, discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Document 333-24, real property task force, the council president has asked if we keep this tabled. It is tabled at the other committee meeting, the housing committee.
Motion to table.
Motion made, is there a second? Seconded by the Vice Chair, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it.
Did we discuss 224 already?
We did, that was the metering. All right, so if there's another one here, help me find this one, folks, I can't. Heritage Packing Company on Market Street. I got, so, if you can find that, that'd be great.
What is it?
It's a, I think it's parking. Heritage Packing Company, Market Street. He didn't give me, so, this is what Officer Cano says, good evening. You got it? What number?
250.
Wow, pull that out, look at you.
250-24, no parking zone.
There it is, there it is. I'll read, before we get into it, I'll read what Officer Cano says, good evening, Council Chair, I have only one item, I can't make it tonight, only one item. I'm in agreement and do support this request as a document, as the document will read. Please know that I will be available and present for our next scheduled meeting. So, that's what I got. I don't have, I don't have a report, I just have him send an email. Do you have a report with it?
Yes.
Oh.
Well, they distributed it to me.
Wait, I don't know. Let me see, let me back, oh, maybe it's back there. Is it back here? Yeah, we got it, it's in the back here, there you go. It's inside the binder, on page? No, the other side, other side, other binder.
Wait a minute, this is it right here. Do you have it?
Yeah, I got mine. Okay, document number 250-24, no parking from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. No parking zone. And Officer Cano recommends that we grant it, and that the sign should be, whatever, northeast corner of Salem Street on Market Street to a .3, 230 feet, for 120 feet to a .350. And so, it's on the east side of the sidewalk from 452 to 454. So, I think that's good enough to me, anyway. Is there a motion to send this up to the full council with the favorable recommendation to order a public hearing?
Yeah, motion to send to full council, recommendation to order a public hearing.
Motion made by Council Del Rosario, seconded by the Vice Chair, discussion. Seeing no discussion, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. I think that's it for me. Anybody else have anything, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We do have one more thing in the back before I grant that. I'm just seeing this, have you, do you see this? This is the request for no parking on the east side of Washington Street. Is that you? All right, what, does it have a document number 100?
No, we're going to leave that in there. Because that can go to the one...
Oh, no. Is it? Let's take a look. Yeah, it's April 4th, on page four, yeah.
Withdraw my, withdraw my motion to adjourn.
Okay, if there's no objection, we'll take document number 120, 123. It's in our stuff, council, do you want to take a quick peek at that and see what you're looking to do here?
Is that what, is that, has that worked for you?
Yes, it's, I remember now, Washington Street, it's no parking anytime on the east side, and according to the engineer, city engineer, they went and measured the street, and it's extremely narrow, so...
Restriction only on the narrow segment, so I guess there's, from Acton to Broadway.
I remember the, the start conversation with the city engineer, when they went and measured, there is a side of the street that is extremely narrow. The other side, it's, it's a one-way street, but there's one side that it somehow is extremely narrow, and that's why he recommended that on that side, only one side parking only.
So, which side of the street will it be parking on, between Broadway and Acton? Broadway Ave and Acton? I don't see that on this one thing.
It would be from, from Broadway Ave, it's gonna be on Acton Street, from Broadway Ave and Washington Street, between Broadway Ave and Washington Street.